Good evening, and before we begin, I just want to thank you for coming to our rescheduled board meeting. This is something that we just have to have in a timely manner because we need to take a final look at the budget that we agreed upon to be able to get it to the lawyer and everything in time. So, thank you for bringing the element after the storm. We begin with the question.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
And our public input will be right by our vice chair.
The first public input session is a 21-minute session with each person having no longer than three minutes in which to make a statement. But a second public input session may be held at the end of the meeting if allowed by the board chair. Each speaker will give his or her name, address, and reason for speaking. Public input is designated for district residents, but the board chair may grant non-residents the opportunity to address the board. Statements concerning subject matter that falls under the law regarding executive sections, for example matters involving personnel, cannot be made during public input. We as a community pledge to treat each other as wish to be treated. We pledge to seek understanding when there may be disagreement. Regardless of outcomes or opinions, we pledge to move forward with respect. This is time for comments and/or questions for the board, but please be aware that some questions may not be able to be answered at this meeting.
Thank you. Public input?
Good evening, Brittany Hilton, North Berwick. Dear I'm a C D school board, we would like for you to seriously reconsider consolidating the specials at Nolan School and the Northbrook Elementary School. You continue to speak of equity. If that is your reasoning, please consider that if you consolidate, some of these teachers will be asked to teach 476 students each week, which we believe is more students than any other K through 12 specialist in the entire district. If Lebanon Elementary School is closed next year, the Nolan School absorbs their fifth grade, and the Nolan School's specialist teachers will then be required to teach an additional 70 students approximately. That's an output of 550 students. Where is the equity in that? Please also ask yourselves, how are the specialists expected to show their support at two schools and in two communities at monthly staff meetings, parent-teacher conferences, open house nights, and community events? It will also be very difficult for our Nolan and Northbrook Elementary specialists to collaborate with their colleagues for further learning opportunities for their students. If both schools consolidate, special teachers will be asked to manage two separate schools and classrooms, adapt to the culture and expectations of two different schools and two different communities. Because both these schools are smaller, they have fewer resources to meet the needs of their students. They use their talents and specialties to service their students that need early intervention, for those that need to excel, for those that students meeting academic and behavioral goals. How will they be able to do that if they consolidate? If you decide to consolidate, we may even lose amazing teachers if we continue to stretch on this thing. Then where will we be? Many programs at both schools will have to be discontinued or cut if consolidation happens due to lack of time. Here's a few. Northbrook Elementary kindergarten and first grade fine order intervention would end. Support for the ITI B students interested in art would not be possible. Project-based learning in collaboration with classroom teachers in writing, social studies, and science would end, such as Mrs. Shaw received a Sam and Grant for the first students currently collaborating with art in this. However, this would not be possible if we consolidated specials. The Square One Art fundraiser would end, which provides arts at the Nolan and the Huzzy School thousands of dollars for materials like kilns and etc. that taxpayers do not have to pay for. Northbrook Elementary would not be able to help teach the Noble Flex. Please also remember certified art teachers do not follow scripted program or specific curriculum that is given to them. They build their own curriculum from scratch, and thus all doing their prep time, in addition to creating lessons, cleaning up, setting up, preparing artwork to hang on walls, which is outside of the contract, prepping supplies, etc. If you have ever hosted an art project by yourself with many children at one time, you can appreciate how much work and how long this takes. P A would lose. Northbrook Elementary's teacher would be unable to service struggling Northbrook Elementary students that need early intervention. All school specialists would be unable to give incentives for students meeting academic goals. Both schools would be unable to support teachers with movement breaks. Their teachers would be unable to fill in what staff is out, and they would be unable to mentor and provide incentives, which are important to the newly adopted P D I's incentive, included but not limited to Northbrook Elementary's running club, kindergarten run club, Hula Hut, which has evolved into a community event in Northbrook.
I can take that from concerns.
We have to.
I just kind of chopped a little bit to make it short.
Yes, you got it. Congratulations.
Hi, how are you? My name is Joseph Forte. I live on 6 Chadmore Lane in North Berwick, and I have two kids in the school system. I'm here to speak today on behalf of over 70 people who have signed a petition expressing their outrage at all of the proposed cuts that are about to be approved tonight to the budgets that our administrators have said they need in order to continue funding our schools. And we know based on the last meeting that our schools are underfunded compared to the rest of the county, and the money's being used well. Our test scores are above what you would expect given those funding levels. And so, you know, teachers are going to be out of a job. The current teachers that are there are going to be stretched even thinner. Our students are going to bear the brunt of those cuts, and all for a very small sum for the average taxpayer, I mean a double-digit sum. What is that, a tank of gas? A modest day out at a restaurant? And we're going to plunge our schools into chaos for the sake of that. So, if you'd like to see the petition and the full text and a full explanation, I'd be glad to provide that to you. And if you have questions, I'd be glad to answer that as well.
Do you have a copy of it that we can pass around?
Yep. It's double-sided.
Thank you.
And it's continuously being added to, so it may be up to 100 signatures right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Public input this time? Moving on to the board adoption of budget, fiscal year '25 district budget.
Okay. Before we start with the budget, we invited Principal Artibault back to talk through his plans for the use of the funds that we discussed last meeting, and looking for all papers. I have a copy of the document, and...
All right, so I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to talk about Noble Middle School's three-year plan to improve school culture and climate, and as well as to increase academic gains for all students. So, this plan's a working document in the early stages of development, and will require more collaboration and a feedback cycle as we implement it. But I want to be clear that this conversation did not start last week. This is something that we've been talking about throughout the year, and so this is just an opportunity to talk to you folks about it. So, there are two main goals that we're going to be looking at when we're talking about Noble Middle Schools. So, the first goal is to cultivate a positive and inclusive school climate by enhancing multi-tiered proactive systems and programs that effectively manage and address challenging behaviors while incorporating family and community engagement. The second goal is to enhance instructional effectiveness by elevating lesson planning practices across all grade levels and subjects differentiated for all ability levels with a focus on tier-one intervention strategies, empower teachers to develop and implement standards-aligned differentiated lesson plans that incorporate engaging strategies and appropriate learning activities for all students. So, we'll have three total positions that will address these goals, and the first two positions are multi-tiered systems of support interventionists, so M T S S, which is required by the state and the field. So, M T S S interventionists play a crucial role in supporting students' academic behavior and social-emotional growth within an educational setting. These roles focus on implementing interventions tailored to meet the needs of our diverse students, ensuring equitable access to education, and fostering a supportive learning environment. The third position, we're calling a differentiation specialist, and their primary responsibility is going to be to design and implement strategies that cater to the diverse needs of learners within an educational setting, that work closely with teachers, administrators, and other educational stakeholders to ensure that instruction is adapted and personalized to meet the unique requirements of each student. So, all three of these positions are student-facing, meaning that they're going to be working directly with students and teachers to reach these goals. So, it's not like an administrative-type role. These are people who are going to be working directly with students and teachers. One of the things that we've really thought about is how we can create continuity with the work that's happening K-5, as well as eight, 12, and Noble High School, and be, you know, middle school's obviously that middle of the road melting pot, but we want to make sure that the continuity goes K-12 and is not bumpy yet six, seven.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
So, let's take just the situation, because I think a lot of the concerns are just around bullying.
Yeah.
So, these are great, they look very academic-based, but I'm assuming I'm missing something here. So, if you have a student who feels like they're being bullied, and you've got the potential bully in the picture, how do these interventionists address that, other than academically? I get that keeping students engaged appropriately is helpful, but having had a student who felt bullied, how would this impact that?
Great question. So, M T S S, the two M T S S interventionists, those folks are going to be doing the academic and behavioral side, which is really key. So, one thing that I have noticed in years, but specifically this year, is that it's actually not like one or two or 50 bullies. Really, just about any person walks in, can say something pretty mean to anybody. It's part of kind of figuring things out. And so, really what we need to be having conversations with kids about is structure and instruction, that restorative work. We need somebody who can facilitate that, who can engage with the classroom teachers, because they are huge, they're huge stakeholders in this process, and families, you know, be able to create plans for kids, and could be an entire lunch table maybe that's having some issues and a little back and forth. And we're already, we're dealing with a lot of those things, right? We have excellent school counselors, excellent staff, but this is going to be just that next level of really coaching up staff members, but also having somebody who's able to work through processes and protocols with kids as they're going through the struggle. So, it's not all academic. A lot of what we're looking at is supporting those exact situations that you're talking about.
Thanks. So, what would be the profile of the people you would hire here? Do they have a psychology background, or educational, or what are you looking for when you're looking for these positions?
So, ideally, we're going to have like highly skilled veteran background in these situations. That's, we're looking for someone who's been there, been like on sort of that ground floor, worked through these situations in several sort of like experiences, I guess, but we're going to put it out and hope that we get a diverse group of applicants to come and take a look. That's what, I'm hoping for, somebody with a lot of experience doing these things, and ideally masters level. That's what I hope for.
So, with these people, so I know when teachers like have an issue with students and they're trying to break down the class, they'll send them out, and a lot of what I hear is they come back and the same thing, and they're trying to teach a class. And so, would this provide support at that level? Like if a student is having an issue, sending him to the office isn't always, I mean, I've had people tell me they like it because they get snacks. My kid likes to go to the office, so he doesn't care about it, doesn't commission it. So, does this provide a level to take care of that, so that...
Yeah, so ideally, we don't, like our punishments are significantly less, right? Like the goal is to get less referrals, because teachers have skills that they're using in the classroom. Kids have skills that they are learning and being able to apply in the classroom. So, we have this, I think, two-pronged system where we, with improvement or with training on both of those fronts, I think that we're going to be able to take a big chunk out of this. Ideally, kids are not coming to the office regularly.
Right, right.
There will always be kids who need that, but I think that where we are right now is not where we need to be.
Awesome. So, would this be one-on-one type of, the disturbance a little bit more of a group setting and class setting? Or...
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, I think of a variety of needs of kids. So, there's just, it could be the really shy kid who just has like anxiousness being in the class, like not necessarily a big problem, but not successful from a social perspective that way. And so, maybe there are groups, and maybe, you know, through restorative justice, you need groups of kids, you need people. So, this is somebody or people that we're going to use, we're going to use the supports and staff members that we currently have, just to get on the team, help, I think, fill in some holes that we have, and go. So, I don't want to say, I think that as a district, we don't do a whole lot of one-on-one. I don't think that we get a big bang for the buck there, but I, certainly there are short bursts of time and chunks of time that that's helpful, and I think it's really important to take a look at the data on these situations. So, like whatever we're seeing, when somebody is doing, like providing an intervention, creating an intervention plan for a student, it's really important to keep an eye on the data. Is the data improving based on what we're doing, or do we need to try something different?
And staff as well, is it going to be like they're going to work, the teacher who's having, she's in the classroom, or will it be more like groups of teachers, try to be loud, groups of teachers, or a combination of...
So, I think that how Noble Middle School is structured with teams, I think it makes sense to do some team-level tier-one intervention, so that classroom hire, how you're working with a student who might be struggling at that level, and then if there are specific potential combinations of students and teachers, an individual teacher that's having a struggle there, and that's part of the principal assistant principal job as well, right? Like we're, that's what we need to be doing as well. And so, I think that it adds a layer, it adds more, I would say, consistent ability to be right there, jump in, do some coaching, saying, hey, here's what happened, and now here's what, here's some things that I saw, or here, you know. So, it's definitely going to be working with individual teachers as well as whole teams or groups or departments, or things like that.
Mike, we got two questions. Just referencing goal number one, talk about cultivating a positive and inclusive society by enhancing, and I think enhancing is a key word there, multi-tiered proactive systems and programs that effectively manage and address challenging behaviors. So, can you differentiate between the systems you have now with multi-tiered proactive systems and programs? Can you differentiate that from what exists now to what will exist in September of 2024?
Sure. So, from academically, what happens with M T S S is we have labs, so we have two literacy labs and one math lab. And so, how it looks is that those labs are enrolled into based on test scores, and sometimes in other things too, but I would say primarily test scores. And because we run an A B schedule for globals, and so one of those globals gets taken by a lab, and so that's going to change next year, so that even students who might be struggling academically should still be able to have two globals. I think that's a core philosophy. So, we will, there is an opportunity with squire time, there's also opportunities working, collaborating with teams to find opportunities to either push in or pull small groups of students out to do sort of those targeted interventions similar to what happens in elementary schools right now. So, that would be the plan academically. Right now, we have a sixth-grade program where there's a teacher in EdTech who work primarily with sixth graders. In the past, they have had a homeroom where they had sort of a list of, or a roster of students who needed some more support, and they would run it that way and sort of be a home base, but also go support those students in classrooms, and also something similar in seventh grade with a specific teacher. So, I think that there's some leverage there in that model of having a room and having a place where people can sort of go to when they need a different setting for short amounts of time or potentially scheduled amounts of time. But I do, I've seen some success at the elementary level, and certainly at the high school level, where you, someone creates a plan with a student, involves parents, I think about little multiple pathways, ish, as far as how closely you work with individual students, support them, figure out what they need, and get them back into that academic setting. So, I don't know if that answers your question?
Somewhat, right? I think, you know, there's the ideas, and I think implementation is going to be the issue, and I think, you know, to what Sylia was saying, you know, we are aware of situations where teachers can't teach. So, now students need a place to go, you know, okay, but if they're sent back to the classroom, definitely ten, they come back to the classroom, the same issues are arising, that's the kind of problem we're talking about, because the students can't learn, right? If one student's in there, and I have a personal experience with my own daughter who lost a year of second grade, I'd be honest, lost the year because of behaviors of one particular student in class. And I understand school systems trying to make it work for everybody, but when the cost as a student who's following all the rules and doing all the expectations isn't able to learn, that's not a good, that's not a good situation. That's not a win, right? And I think it's really important for you to keep in mind as you're developing this, that there are, you know, I don't know what the percentage is, but usually it's around 90% of students are doing exactly what every parent wants them to do, and every teacher wants them to do, and every administrator wants them to do, right? And if we just go off that, saying 90% of the kids are doing it, then we've got to make sure that 10% don't take away the 90% chance of telling them, right? And so, if that's what you're talking about as far as creating a positive and inclusive culture to do that, then I look forward to seeing those results over the course of next year, as to how much more time will we be able to teach. The other thing I was talking about, goal two, so I'll leave goal one there for now. Goal two, is it, the way that I'm reading it, and I need you to kind of explain it so that it doesn't feel this way, is that you feel that some, at least to some extent, some of the behaviors that you're seeing are because of ineffective instructional, ineffective instruction, because that's the way I'm reading it, right? We want to enhance instructional effectiveness, and this is to address the behaviors in the school, right? This was our discussion when we last met. So, that's the way I'm reading it. I'm reading that you feel that there's ineffective instruction happening, that's actually contributing to misbehavior. Am I incorrect in that reading?
It's okay.
Yeah, I think that we have some places to go.
We have room to grow.
And that's fair, right? Honesty is what we're trying, we try to be transparent, right? And honest as a school board, and to own it, right? It's not, everything's not perfect.
Well, and just not to, but the reality is, is that we have new staff who might not have the experience necessary to handle some of the more difficult situations that are happening. We need to provide them with more direct instruction basically to help them with their own instruction. I mean, that's, that's just the reality, and that's not only at Noble Middle School, that's really any system, because the prep that's coming, no fault to the colleges, but they don't have, they don't have a real scenario that walks in the door, and there's a lot of interesting scenarios that walk in our doors every day. So, I think it's important. I think part of the issue is what you're saying. If you have a child or more than one in a classroom that's challenging, it becomes very difficult to teach effectively.
Teaching is hard, period.
It is, yeah. So, I think, and that's what I think we're trying to do, is to help those teachers, maybe give them space to develop their skills, but also for me, I think it's super important to me, having had two children that experienced bullying, that somebody, I get those kids who are bullying need some help with social-emotional behavior. That's super important to me. But it's also important to me that somebody checks in with those kids who were, and make sure they're returning to a position where they feel safe at school and want to be there. I mean, I put my daughter out in middle school for a little while because she didn't, and it wasn't because of any, I just feel like, it felt at the time like, and when I talked to teachers, it just wasn't enough space in the day. It just was too much they already had on their plates to be committed to supporting all those things, not their fault, so.
So, I'd like to try to respond to some of the things, there's a lot of them. So, I want to say that quickly, that it is not the norm. I would say we do not send kids back to the same period if a student is asked to leave. So, I will, if that's happened, I bet you that it has not happened, there's not been an administrator who has sent a student back to class, the same class, after they have been removed from class. It has not happened. And so, that does not mean that a student has not shown back up in the same class, but it has not been a conscious decision that that's happened. So, I'll own that, but I want everyone here to know publicly that that is not part of my practice. Part of that comes with the way our schedule works, is that if a student is sent out of class and it's 20 minutes into the next class, and it was a disruption that the student was blurring, so not something that is like incredibly, you know, it's not traumatizing, it's not something that is like, my judge, so someone gets removed from the class because they're being disruptive in class for whatever the reason is, if it's not flagrant, then I'm going to get them back into their schedule. That is, that's really important to do, and I think a lot of the scenarios that I see, most students can get back into their schedule. They have not done something flagrant enough where they need to be removed. Some students have, and they are removed, and they do not go back. And some students have parents on the way, and we meet, and we solve that problem, and we do reentry meetings and things like that. So, that is not happening. What may happen, here's something that's interesting, if a student has science class, they get removed from science class, that science class is their homeroom. Science class ends, we move on to homeroom, the student's back in their schedule, so it might feel like they're going back to that teacher right after they got removed. But those are situations where science class is now over, or squire time, or something like that. So, there are scenarios where a student may be back-to-back with a teacher who had a situation with them, but it's not typical.
Or two students just have the next class together, so the same thing could happen.
Right, and so that's something that we're looking at as well. And so, I still need to do some work on what the schedule looks like, and the student groupings look like, and so I don't want to necessarily say that at the school board meeting, it's a little early still, but it's something that we're thinking about actively, and I'm going to work with the leadership team on to, I think, structure, structure, structure. And when you have that, and it sounds, it's pretty conservative, but if you, I think that students do well with structure, and I think any classroom, any classroom teacher would tell you that, routines and structure, knowing what's coming next, predictability, I think that that's important.
Awesome.
Yeah, I think the other question I'd add is just to make sure that, or I would suggest, I'm not saying make sure, but suggest that students have to earn their right to return to their instructional program. I think I don't understand, if they've been removed, being asked to say, "I can't teach while you're in the room," is a significant error on the part of a student. May not be suspendable, I agree, right? But if a teacher says, "I can't teach," or "Students can't learn while you're in this room," that's a pretty big deal, right? I refuse to believe that teachers just, you know, very flippant send students out of their room. I don't believe that's the case, right? So, if that's the case, then I think students have to work really hard to earn the right to return to their instructional program. Maybe that's a three-page paper handwritten, they have to say, "I will," and it's something that they actually have to do, and if it takes them two, three periods to get it done, then so be it, but that's the work that they know, if I get removed to this room, I have a big problem that I'm going to have to sort out, and it might take a long time. So, if you can just think of that, you know, how do they, they've got to realize that being in that classroom, I would love all of our students in I'm a C D 60 to understand that being in the classroom with our teachers here is a privilege. It is a privilege, and that's to make sure that the students know it's a privilege, and if they get asked to be, if they can't be there, they got to pay the piper somehow, some way to get back in, right? So, that's what I encourage. What you mentioned, you mentioned it's a three-year plan, and you're in the middle of the year, you're in it, so is year one this year, and there's two more years to this plan, or like...
Year one starts next year.
Okay.
We can call this half of a year if you want to do that, we can go half of a year now, and definitely am looking forward to coming back next year at school board meetings and showing us some data.
Can I ask one more question?
Please do.
And this is short, but this is awesome, except for me, it doesn't speak to the issue that reflects... the issue that reflects why I think most of us wanted this money put back in the budget. Did you work on, and, and just from a taxpayer point of view, before saying we want this put back in to address some of the bullying issue, I sort of wanted to refer to behavior, how it's gonna be. This really to me, when I read it, I thought, ooh, this looks all academic.
If you look at the second part of the multi-tiered systems of support intervention as the second one, does speak more to behavior, intervention plans, emotional behavioral assessments, um maybe strategies to promote positive student behavior. So, I think.
I just wanna make that super clear that that is really the primary motivation for doing this. I know test scores are important, but.
I, we're, we're, yes, I, I hear you. I hear you.
They're equally important.
Well, one helps the other.
Yeah, one helps the other. There's somebody on it, help each other.
I just have two questions for you. Um, one, somebody in the class already, you're just gonna see. Um but I want us, I want us to know how are they gonna do that to incorporate family and community engagement? How, how do you see that?
Uh, I definitely think that my experience is where every time I call home, parents are almost every time like looking to be engaged, looking to help the school work with their kids, um get in, talk with teachers, figure out what they can do to solve. So, I think that having an extra layer of that um communicating with what kid, what we're doing. Um I think that teachers are doing that now, but it's just an extra layer of getting, getting families, understanding what um, what the expectations are in school, what we're learning in school, um around those things, as well as like what your specific child, like how, what are the strategies that are working at home? What are the strategies that are working or not working at school? How can we, um I think just be more uh a direct line or a more um robust communication with home for, for specific students?
Okay. And how do you do about the, this is coming out of my second question, where it says somebody made a, we asked something around it. As we're talking about um say a bullying issue, there's, there's the person who was bullied and the bully, if not a group of them. How are we gonna look at the total population of the school? Because every time there's a situation like that, every time there's a situation that happens in school, it doesn't matter what it is, where, where the whole school's affected really in, in a lot of ways. Sometimes it's a classroom, but really the whole school population is affected. How, how do you see them looking at that? Not just the two or the three or whatever happened? I mean, if, if you watch something happen in the hallway, was a bullying incident, physical or not, it's still gonna affect everybody in the hallway. Their day is not gonna be the same as it was before it happened. So, we're just wondering, how is this going to affect that type of thing?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So, uh there are some things that we have, we've uh I would say put in the first iteration or seen several iterations. One of, one of them would be uh myself and another, the R teacher Rebecca Holling, we're doing student ambassadors and seen sort of like a couple, a couple sort of descriptions on what that group of students does, but a lot of it is just positive. Um student to student, hallway, stairway, bathroom, um modeling type behavior. Um then, you know, just things like that where we're talking to kids about how they actually have the voice. What's great about middle school is an incredible sense of justice, right? Like uh middle schoolers are in this really sweet spot where they see justice and they're not jaded yet. Um and so, like we can capitalize on that. And so, the, I think the idea would be to have these individ- these new individuals, but also our current team, spending more time working in small groups of kids, whether it's lunch groups during lunch, whether it's uh recess group or squire times, to create a positive engagement at school where kids see themselves um having some momentum, having some direction, um having a voice. And, and I think that's really important for all grades, but certainly in middle school. Um and it's a huge, huge uh conversation about this, but I, I think that all of our students, we really need to make sure that uh our school has a very specific, or not specific, but really concrete identity and who we are, who Noble Squires are, who Noble is as a community. And it starts obviously in an elementary school, but this is where all, all towns are together. Uh kids have this, they have the ability to take action where in elementary school it's just different. Um they can do it. And so, I think that we need to provide air for them to do that and some coaching and some modeling and really the kids can do it.
I love what you just said because I think you nailed it and I really, never really thought about it before. They come with a sense of confidence and justice and they either keep that or lose it.
Yep.
And I, and what Tori said is true too. It's if they see it happening, it's upsetting to some kids to think, wow, I just saw that and nobody's fixing this. Or that poor kid who it happened to is still feeling hurt by it. Like kids in classrooms where one kid's bullying another and the teacher's too busy to see it, but they see it. And I had a child in that situation who ends up in the office with the bully saying you were part of the problem when it's really, so yeah, just having the extra resources, I hope really gives the opportunity to do that. The other thing I said that I'm done is mentors. Do you, did, are mentors ever used?
We do, yep. So, we have uh, we have adult mentors in our school. We have a few adult mentors in the community and also Noble High School has been sending uh high school students to Noble Middle School. It's, I think it's awesome to watch. Uh the teenagers have, have a middle schooler and I see him walking around, I see him outside and down in the yard and just spending time sitting, sitting down, just chit chatting, but um doing a ton of things. And that uh, I get the goosebumps thinking about that. It's huge.
That just came out of the community forum that we.
Yeah.
There really is, so there really is some great stuff happening. Really true is seven, nine, ten. And uh, you know, some days, some days it's a little better than that, some days it's a little bit worse. But, you know, I think that we're heading in the right direction. This, it's been, it's been tough this year and I think it's, it's certainly not uh North Burke, Burke and Lebanon who have, you know, these, these only, these situations. Everyone I've talked to.
Yeah, it's everywhere. It's everywhere.
Yep. It's a banner year across everyone I've talked to, so.
Yeah. So, when you use the mentors, do you use them for the kids who are struggling socially emotionally or do you use them also for the kids? Because I'm thinking if you can identify kids who are feeling bullied and find them a mentor who's been through that, that would be huge.
We definitely do that.
Awesome. That's excellent.
Yep. So, yeah, there's, there's a, a variety of reasons that people are matched up. Um there's a lot of thought that goes into it and it's really, it's very cool.
Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you, Tori.
Okay. We'll continue with the adoption process. Denise um did her magic and um so you have a new packet of materials and they are the tabs, but they're not every tab. There are tabs that have had some shifts or changes. I don't know if you want to take a moment to just put them in your notebooks or if you wanna just move ahead and talk about the revenue, the um tab twenty-two, because that's really the page that has some of those really big shifts on that. So, why don't we um just go to, okay, we'll go to tab twenty-three? The new tab twenty-two.
You forgot your highlight.
So, two of you guys got clipped once, like completely clipped, I think I remember this every time. The rest of you just have to pull, pull over.
Numerical order.
They're in numerical order.
Yes. Um and the one tab that is missing is the fund balance tab. I literally, this was coming off the coffee urn as you guys were sighing. I'll get that to you.
All right. So, are we on to have, does everybody have tab twenty-two?
Last year.
So, last uh board meeting, we discussed um all the proposals out there for um differ, different um items to take out of the, the budget. Um landed on seven point seven, seven percent. And so, today we're gonna talk through that. If you look at the revenue page, tab twenty-two, it is currently right now, if you look at the bottom, um it is seven point four eight percent. So, we will go through some of those shifts that have occurred. Um and then we'll talk further about that before um moving on to the other two, school nutrition and adult education. So, we did find out this week that our medical came in higher than we thought. So, we had budgeted seven percent. It came in at eight point two six eight percent. Uh so, we needed to reflect that and adjust that in throughout every piece where we had staff. We had to pull all that, uh all that shift. Um that was sixty-five thousand dollars more than what we were, more than what we had hoped. Uh we were cautious, but we knew that that could happen. Um we did recalculate the MHA tuition. So, right now it's thirty-three thousand, one hundred fifteen and it's going up um to forty thousand, nine hundred forty-two. So, that gives us some of that increase there. And we've also, in talking with Josie, who's the director, Josie Chadbourne of MHA, she um is expecting one more tuition student in next year as well. So, that is um a, on the positive for us. Uh one thing that you will note as you look through some of these tabs more specifically, we did add twenty-fourth hours in for tables for um the lunch periods at Noble Middle School and given some of the changes that um Principal Archibald wants to work through, uh we added that in. That is certainly something, you know, that you can discuss. And I don't know if you wanna speak very quickly to that. I may just call you up again.
Yep. Uh so, right now we currently have about eighteen lunch, eighteen cafeteria tables in our cafeteria. Um we run two lunches per grade, so four total lunches. Um about twenty-five minutes per lunch. Uh looking to next year, I would like to get all the grade eating lunch together. Um and then having a recess together as well. And so, uh for that, for that social time, for that free, um there's a lot of structure in some parts of the day, but also some time where kids get to go be kids and have some, some ability to do that. So, it's a work in progress, but uh in order to do that and make it so that not every seat, sometimes there needs to be a seat or two at a table that's not taken just based on the, the chemistry of some students. Um we need about ten more tables and the tables are wicked expensive. They don't, you wouldn't expect it by looking at them, but they're about twenty-four hundred bucks a piece and there are eight seats per table. And we have the space to put them in the cafeteria, the space is there, we just need the tables.
And then looking at the kilowatt hours for electricity, um we put in sixty thousand dollars worth of savings for that. And as you go up, looking at the top, you'll see that we have the high cost of out of district placements. We put in at three hundred twenty thousand. And the fund balance.
That fund balance, six hundred ninety-three, one ten. That was the original, from your original version, plus that at efficiency main, um money that will be in the fund balance when we start on July first. So, that was uh money that we've talked about previously.
And then the next additional usage fund balance.
Yep, that's the same as it was.
And the sports activity fee, we put in at thirty thousand, uh just to reflect a little bit more as, as we were talking earlier. We're still, we're coming out of COVID, so just um this is a more accurate reflection of, of what is happening for that.
So, it's not an increase in the fees, it's just an increase in participation?
Right. The name care revenue of a hundred thousand that we discussed starting next year and picking up because we had done it in the past, just picking it back up. And then the miscellaneous revenue is at sixty-seven, eight twenty-five. And so, that one again, it was thirty thousand in the first draft and then we added that money from the tri-town bookmobile that has, that was in a previous budget that's been sitting and we're gonna bring that back into the budget. And then the MHA tuition, student tuition, and that shows the increase in the tuition there. And then interest. A hundred twenty thousand. And then the nine thousand for national board certification salary supplement for the teachers that have been um nationally certified. So, then you see the projected increase, increase in local taxes is the seven point one five one. And as you follow it down, it goes to seven point four eight. Any particular questions or conversations?
I wrote something about the specials because I saw the cert, the um petitions and ahead of time. So, it really gave me some time to reflect. I think the one bird and red, most passed out, each of us had over, I wanna say two hundred signatures last I saw.
It was two each, one for.
Uh so, I, I dropped out, I don't know. Um we talked about social emotional needs changing and that's half of what these specials provide to these kiddos that through their clubs and programs. One could argue that they're saving some money by not hiring additional staff to support these evolving needs and that current staff has already stepped up to put these outreach programs into place to support the students and the teachers in classrooms. And then I don't even generally talk about those by specific kids, but we're doing it tonight, so I'm gonna do it. Um I honestly see these programs, so similar to what Mr. A was sharing, he's putting in place. Like they're already doing these outreach programs for these kids who need it. Like my kiddo is targeted to harsh board, um but he's a kiddo who, you know, I didn't wanna say bullied. Sometimes like, he's just a good kid. He's a good kid and just an easy, easy one to pick on, also pick on. Um and so these clubs and things have been made in these schools to support these kids and like have them excited. Like the library teacher was telling my mom that she, like when she says to the kids for a history club, they have to go back to class. Like you should see how upset they are that they have to be like a club in the library about history. They're great. It's like, so I just really, really wanna consider like work in my mind and opinion and from what I see as a parent, we are asking to take away in elementary school, but we're asking to be implemented in the middle school. And I just really struggle with that and would love that.
I get it. I just, I think it's tough because it isn't something that's offered in the other two tents, so that makes it a bit of a challenge.
And the one did have a really good point though, like what their, the amount of students they now see to compare to the other schools, like what does that actually look like? And I think equity is a really hard thing to talk about because we also have like really small programs for, you know, kids with special needs. Um you know, so like equity's a fun word, but I don't know that it's the most appropriate word.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put my two cents in. Lebanon has none of that. Is that fair?
I mean, we, we can do another, I mean, yeah.
I think that would have to be the conversation for me. As if it's working so well there, we're gonna leave that money in, we would really have to look at the other two schools and figure out how we can offer that. I was gonna ask Sue or Otter if you can address some of the points, you know, like if that is your reasoning, please consider that if you consolidate, some of these teachers will be asked to teach four hundred and seventy-six students each week, which they believe is more students than K-12 specialists in the district, entire district. Is that, thank you?
Between Hanson and Lebanon Elementary, just four hundred three students. So, at the elementary level, um that is, if we consolidate, that is, um they will be higher than that. Um so, at four, the Milton staff and the North Burwick Elementary staff would be at four seventy-three. So, they would be higher than the four hundred and three that's currently in Lebanon.
Mr. Forte, I apologize, but the board doesn't actually take during their session this public input afterwards, though if you wanna put it in. I don't, I don't want you to feel like we're being, we're ignoring you. Just letting you know.
And again, that's a pro- like approximately two point five students per class per session.
So, we add in the, did you say you added in the Milton school to North Burwick and Burwick? Because Lebanon has their own technical middle school. That's why there's no kids. So, I'm just questioning.
So, what I said, I, maybe I didn't answer, maybe I didn't answer incorrectly. So, North Burwick Elementary School and Milton, they consolidate, it's four seventy-three students.
Four seventy-three.
Right now Lebanon has the highest between Lebanon Elementary and Hanson, they have four hundred three students. And that's currently the highest. So, if we consolidate, there is that much more between Milton and North Burwick.
Wait, so they're the same? They do the same?
They'd be the same? They would be 70, it would be 73 higher, about 73 higher.
Okay.
Which averages out to about 2.5 per class that they would receive.
I mean, that's like adding in an additional grade, right? Like when you think of like how many kids are in grade.
Depends on what school.
Yeah. I feel like actually on average, that's probably a similar, maybe, I don't know. But I mean, that's.
So just, just to make sure I understand, this is just popping in my head. For Lebanon Elementary and Hanson, there would be one gym teacher, one special.
Yes. And the same at Hussey?
And the same at Hussey, yes. Hussey being one school of grades, K through third.
Yes.
Over in Lebanon, we would have K through fifth.
Yes.
Over at. I was going to say, North Berwick.
K four.
Over at North Berwick, it's K four.
Yes.
And then the fifth grades are.
The Berwick.
The Berwick and North Berwick.
And plus fourth grade's the Berwick's.
Okay, so that's why you add, so you add Hussey.
Hussey would stand alone and Lebanon Elementary and Hanson would stand alone, but they would not be changed. Those two schools are. Yeah. So, so currently, I got it right here. I do, okay. So currently there in North Berwick, there are 15 sections total. Milton has 12 sections. Hanson has 16. Lebanon Elementary has seven. Hussey has 20 sections. Hanson and Lebanon and Hussey also have self-contained programs. So the specialists work with those students in a different group. So Hussey projected next year, Hussey sections would be 24 to 25 and even 26. We have 17 students from Child Development Services for Hussey. If all of those students need self-contained programming, which many of them will, that could make that section 25, up to 25 or 26 sections. There would be 27 sections if you consolidate North Berwick and Milton. So Hussey would be comparable in number of sections to North Berwick and Milton. Hanson would be at 23. And again, based on their CDS numbers, they could go up to having another section based on any life skills or self-contained students. So we're talking 24 to 27 sections. That's the range. That is the range.
So just, just.
Okay.
No, no, this is okay. It's fine, it's good to work.
So North Berwick Elementary and Milton School share the same special teacher?
Currently, like currently they do not, so there's.
Currently they do not.
They do not.
This is the consolidation.
But then consolidate those two?
Yes. Those two schools.
Okay.
So then there would be one PTE teacher for North Berwick and Milton.
Thought that was what it was. I just wanted to make sure.
Sure, no.
Because I would just.
Sure. Yeah, okay, yeah. Can you, can you say the number for Milton again, the sections? Sure. Milton has 12. That's 12. And I also just want to just restate the fact that we do have intermural money in need that all schools, all elementary schools, all K-12 schools have. But some of the clubs and programs can run and have run after school hours. And I know that that's a different conversation, but we do have money in the budget to allow for some of that to happen as well. As you're thinking about, you know, just to the point of the students are really enjoying the history club or something like that. So there is, there are funds available for that.
How likely is it that somebody can take that on, that a teacher can take that on, get that offered?
That is the past. I think it's like, is what they recall, that's school electives or something like that. They've done that before. So all different kinds of things they've offered.
Right, yeah, I know that. But, but so there, it's really dependent on interest levels and folks being interested in like, you know, stamping to do it. And teachers don't get that stipend, do they? Is that just the cost of the program or does the?
Do you have any of those running currently?
After school activities.
And what?
Well, let me think. Hussey, Hussey has like a math club that runs periodically. And then we've got a robotics that is coming from out, from the shipyard that comes into the school. So like that will happen, you know, it ebbs and flows. So it's like a six-week chunk and then it stops and then there's a six-week chunk. We have knitting. I think it tries, we try to do it in each school.
Each school?
Yes. I think Hussey just ended it up and I think Milton, yeah.
Okay.
And then there's knitting. That gets a lot of traction. Some theater, some. So there is.
So it would be on the same model as what we do in current?
Yeah. Denise, sorry, could you, for purposes for the board, could you, if, if that 190, could you let us know what that would do to the other sections?
Thank you.
I think it was in the final analysis, it was closer to 195, so I'm going to put that in. It raises school expenditures from 8.32% increase to 8.75. That's at the very top. And it. The bottom line, 7.48% increase and makes it 8.33.
I hate to ask you this, if it's automated, great. If not, I don't want you to have figured out what would that mean for 100, 100,000. I have no idea.
Lauren, she was slowing you.
I'm, I'm getting it.
I'm literally trying to find the time on my notebook so I can see that.
Okay. It's, so at the 7, let me just check this. At 7.48 increase, which is what you have before you, it was, again, disclaimers because this doesn't actually appear under tax.
I get it, yeah.
By town, but approximate for Berwick, 78.74. Lebanon, 78.37. And North Berwick, 52.69. If we were to add this money, that brings it, Berwick to 87.71. Lebanon to 86.82. And North Berwick to 59.15. Thanks.
Less than $10 per 100,000.
I was just hearing the board correctly. If I'm hearing the board correctly, if we're, if we're considering adding this in, and we recognize that Lebanon and Berwick do not have these opportunities, what would be the cost of adding this same level of support and opportunity at Lebanon-Berwick? I think we actually need to consider that number because this, to me, these are not, this is the same issue.
I agree.
So I don't think it's an increase of, you know, the whatever. I, I think you have to, I mean, double, triple it. I mean, the number of students in North Berwick is much less than the students in Berwick and Lebanon. What, I mean, we're talking, we're talking significant addition. I mean, I don't know what it is, but numbers wise, proportionally, we're talking significant addition.
And to go with that too, is the need there for those schools as well? Like, of course, everyone can use all, all the resources we can get out of the hands.
I'm just going to put this out there and please don't.
Yeah.
The reason that we were looking at this is specifically based on the, the actual number of sections that each of our specialists are teaching. It was a very, very different piece that our Lebanon and Berwick folks are doing versus what North Berwick and Elks is doing. So I really, I, it's a hard thing, it's a wicked hard piece for us. But I really think we need to look at it in terms of that, in terms of what we're doing and trying to. Because I don't know that we can implement the same things in the other two camps. The way that, I mean, I'm totally proud of the specialists who have taken that extra time and done some great things with it. But it isn't actually, it isn't the same as what they're, what we ask them to do. So it's just, it's a hard one.
Hard point.
It's really hard.
Concern with this too, is this potentially a contractual issue? I mean, could somebody file a complaint saying?
They could, yeah.
That's, because, okay, so, so you couldn't actually do this. You couldn't intentionally hire somebody and say, your job won't meet the requirements of your contract. You're going to do this other thing. And if you want to take on other things, you can.
I mean, I don't think, I, I, so, I mean, I think it's a, it's a double, it's a bit of a slide here. But the reality, I think that, I hate to say this, but like classroom, regular classroom teachers would definitely be looking at, at the, at the level of responsibilities and saying, this isn't, it doesn't feel equitable right now.
Yeah.
We did get information from our, we did get, from our teachers' unit about it as well.
Yeah. I got some letters about it.
Yeah, so it's, it's just really hard because this is all good stuff for kids. That's, there's nothing here that isn't, that anybody feels good about. It's just, how do we make this all balance? That's the hard part.
Hypothetically speaking, if somebody in that position left, one of those positions, as it is now, and somebody else came in, could you dictate to them that here's what your job is now? That you must do all these other extra things because you don't have regular sections?
So from a fiscal responsibility, I would look at it. And if somebody left right now, I would be looking at a part-time position.
Right.
To fill the role that needed to be filled in terms of this, of these sections.
Right.
But that's, that's what I would be looking at. You know, as we're trying to, you know, steward this really hard, just difficult budget. You know, it's hard.
This is the new question.
Yeah, unless there are other.
Do we have other discussion?
Is there any other discussion on any of the other, any other questions on that tab 22 that we talked about, we just talked about before adoption?
Knowing that we act as one, once we decide something, is it possible or is this completely out of like, I want to support the budget, I might not support this thing. Can we just straw pull on this one thing? And then whenever that decision is, we use that to support the budget? Does that make sense?
A straw pull is not binding, yeah.
Right, but at least it's general consensus of this 7-1, like, then I can say, okay, that's fine. And I will support the budget, but.
So you're saying?
So we straw pulled with the specials, yeah, to add that in.
So again.
Because it's changed, right, by 203.
So are you saying a thumbs up if we want to reinstate or to upwell?
It's in the now, so we're.
Not consolidate, not consolidate. Is that what you're proposing, not consolidate?
To not consolidate.
To not consolidate specials?
Because right now, when we're looking at it, it is consolidated.
So we can be taking a vote to remove the consolidation.
From the budget?
And alter the budget?
Yeah.
Alter the budget as well.
So that you put 3.3%, which is approximately $10 for the tax.
So alter the budget that we have in front of us, that we came up with last time and alter it to now include the, uh, non-consolidation. Right?
So just to be clear, from a Berwick perspective, it's going to increase Berwick where anybody else. And actually, North Berwick feels it the least.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm not looking at it as nothing at all.
I just want to point it out because if you're, that, that's, for one item, it's kind of, that's all.
Is this, is you're saying?
Because right now, I don't, I'll be honest. I don't love not including it, but if I'm the minority or whoever of us is like, are the minority, then I can say, okay, that's fine. And then I can vote in favor of this budget.
Is it easier to worry as, we're going to keep it the way it is? Vote in favor of keeping the way the budget is? Is that easier to sort of wrap your heads around?
To keep the consolidation in the budget.
To keep the consolidation in the budget. Is that an easier way to look however you want to say it?
Just make sure.
Because I keep asking questions. So, so, so a thumbs up is we're going to keep what we already have, which is keeping the consolidation in the budget. Okay, we ready with that straw pull?
Yes.
So raise the hand, we keeping the budget the way it is?
All right. So the next thing is, if there's nothing else to discuss with the budget, it needs the approval, so it's the, the adoption of this 425 district budget.
So we want somebody to make the motion?
We do need the motion.
And is there regular, any language we have to just put in?
Most.
The document.
Okay.
The, the border doc, the budget.
We have to, we call it. We just have to pull it up, the language up.
Oh, that's what I thought.
Okay. We're just getting to work.
Denise, I want to ask you a quick question. We don't find that we're putting back in to make it.
We're not putting it back in.
We're not, that was from, that was just.
Yes.
Okay. Did you order what it is, Noble Middle's money or that's already back in here, correct?
Yes, so we took out flex, we brought in those three decisions.
Okay.
And then this was a discussion about 190,000, which would keep the specials.
Specials, okay. You just want to make that clear because it just kind of flowed in at 190 and it was insured exactly.
Okay, got you.
So are we looking at the 8.32% or 7.48?
7.48. I believe the wording for the general budget approves a dollar amount.
Yes.
A delta approves the budget and the local share. And then the school attrition is just local share.
The other one for college, the one that's set up here, right?
Yes, so.
I'm just looking back to how you're right.
Yeah, so it's, I think it was the end of March, yeah.
Just have to do, approve the 521 school budget and the local share. Same with the delta.
So you want me to read it?
Yeah.
And then you get approved?
Yes.
Because.
Please do.
So, um, let me have this, so I have both of them.
That's what happens when the power goes up for three days.
Okay. So a board member.
Okay, a board member will need to make the motion to approve the FY25 school budget And the local share of $24,430,560.
Can I just say so long?
May officially, I, I move that we approve the FY25 proposed budget of $49,1,797 with a local share of $24,430,560.
Do it, Stephanie. All in favor?
Okay, thank you. All right, I know we need to do our.
We're gonna do a Delta Ed next. And a board member will need to approve the FY25 adult education budget of $293,981 with a local share of $90,265. So.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
And this next one is a little different. This is, we need a board member to approve the FY25 school nutrition program budget with a local share of $0.
Well, that's easy. Second, all in favor?
So Thursday night?
We have public participation.
Oh, sorry. I jumped ahead to talk about Thursday night, but we have public participation.
Public, second public input session?
Once again, Dr. Joseph Forte, I live in North Berwick. Based on what I understand, because two of the towns don't have the same resources as North Berwick, we are now punishing the teachers and the students of North Berwick for a sum that is a single-digit sum for the taxpayers. That's what you just decided to do. There were no good reasons given for it. And I'm registering a complaint of the over 70 people who signed my petition, and I'm sure others in this room as well.
Single digit. For a house in Berwick, that would be, you know, a $300,000 house, which there aren't any of. That would be thirty, at least 30 bucks compared to a, an 80 bucket, a hundred increase already. So you'd be increasing it 50% fold on every 100,000. So I'm not, I'm not sure with it. I, well, I just wanted to make that point, so I'm not getting it. If it was $5, if it was a single digit, it was 999, I'd go for it. But it's not, it's significantly more than that.
Other public input?
Apparently my leg's just gonna hit everything tonight. Set timer for three minutes. Hi, my name is Robert Travers, I am from Lebanon. So I wanna share a story with you quickly, and then I'll get to my main point. So when I was student teaching in 2014 at Bon Eagle High School, I was in a, I was in, I had an evaluation with my supervising teacher. And one thing that she noted was that when I was teaching, I would focus more on one side of the room versus the other. Now, last meeting, when we were meeting at the auditorium, I noticed that one side, when there were two microphones on either side of the room, I noticed that one microphone was being, wasn't getting as much attention as the other. As a result, during the second, second public input statement last time, I did not get an opportunity to speak, even though I was in line. And I understand the time ramifications of making sure that we were, we were, all got home sometime that evening. And if there were other people in either line, I would have been, I would have been okay with it. I wouldn't have been happy, but I would have been okay with it. But the public input was ended as I was the only one in line. I believe that each public input statement gets three minutes. And again, I understand that, that we wanted to get home at some point that evening. However, I don't think three minutes would have made much of a difference. So, how much time do I, I thought you meant it 18. So I just wanted to note that procedurally, the correct thing to do is for each mic to have, be alternated, one, then the other, then the other, then the other. So that way, everyone gets a fair opportunity to speak. And like I said, if I weren't the only one, I wouldn't have made, I wouldn't have made the point of coming up here and addressing you all tonight. However, I just felt like, at that moment, my rights as a public member of the, of the public, of the district, weren't, 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 I wasn't given a fair opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Other public input?
Real quick, I just wanted to address a conversation. When I said that no students return to class after being sent to the office, there are situations where students are on a plan that they are, if they are removed, they are to take a lap or to check in and then return to class. So that is, it's important to note that that does happen. And I want to clarify that to make sure that I'm not misleading.
Any other public input? Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?